This meeting, so if you have questions or comments, please email them to Jeff. His email is up there right now and he'll get back to you. Board members, when Jeff and Ron and I kind of formatted this meeting, we were thinking that would be best if we went to let each administrator get to the end of their session before we ask them questions, just so they could have the beyond one course. And so we'll wait till after for each session to be complete before taking questions and kind of just be aware of with the question and discussion at the end, kind of just be aware of how much airtime you're well, that's all that's all I'll say. And anyway, just a thank you to the administrators and principals for presenting this evening and all the work you've done. And anyone else who's joining us tonight, just thanks for being here and listening. And I think I can speak for the board and staff by saying we all have the same goal for the next for next school year to get our students onsite as much as possible, while we're maintaining safety for staff and students and working with our budget constraints. So kind of with those goalposts, I will pass to Jeff.
All right, thank you, Norrie. All right, so the agenda for this evening, I'm going to do a little presentation, just reviewing the guidance. I know some of you have read it, or maybe all of you have read it by this point, board members speaking to you and the principals. We do have teachers on and a few community members and somebody from the press this evening. And I would like to review that a little bit because I do want to post this on our website tomorrow. And I want to stop sharing just for a second because I want to make sure I'm recording so I can post it. And I also want to send a link out to parents so they can watch it and get a little more information on the paper. So just give me a second here. Okay, it is recording, so. All right, everybody still see that correct?
Yep.
Yep, all right, so and then we'll have the principals report where their teams are at and how did we get there? We've had our teams meeting from each school, elementary, and they can confirm this when when they get their chances. There's about 10 team members at the elementary made up of classified and certified. We have a, I think, close to 10, eight, nine, or 10 at the middle school. We had five at the high school and we've been meeting. And they've been looking at these plans that you're going to see tonight, sharing your concerns. You've got all that information, and I know that's a lot of information to share with you. And we're going to have to scroll through it as we do it. Hopefully you have it in front of you so you can follow along at your pace, but. And then the next steps, and I'll talk about this also a little later on, but I need to finalize the plan for each school ASAP to get communication out to parents and staff. So one of the reasons being is whether parents, based on what the model will look like in the fall, of whether they want to enroll their students in our online academy and do online specifically, or or they will choose to do the model that we select. And then I need to, and I've been working on this, but I need to continue to finalize the blueprint of safety protocols. And then I need to bring that blueprint to present to the board, and I also need to give it to Washington County Health. And so we'll have to set another board meeting. I am not sure on the timeline on that yet, but that's something we can discuss. So this is every single ODE meeting I get in, this is what they always start with. But I think it's important to understand that you don't make the timeline, the virus makes the timeline. We all would like to get back to normal as soon as possible. But especially in the last two or three weeks with the uptick in the amount of cases, things could be changing. We could, we could get to a plan real soon, and there is potential that guidance can change all the way up to the start of school. We will be living with this for quite some time. And the things that we are looking at and are putting in place are the primary tools for safety, and that is physical distancing and hygiene. And every restriction we lift increases transmission and will increase cases. So those are the things we start with each time, and that is the ODE guidance that we 47-page guidance that we are using in this process. Just very quickly, because I want the principals to have the bulk of the time. And so preparation, we've read the guidance. I've been on public health authority meetings. I get items from them quite a bit now. They were about at the same spot we were. They didn't get the guidance until we actually got it. We're working with our planning teams, engaging our stakeholders. We're working and completing the blueprint and getting ready to submit the blueprint to the school board. I also have to do that to Washington County Health, and they'll focus on sections one through three. And I need to stop sharing for a second, sorry. No, I don't. Marlo's having issues getting in, so I have to let her in again. All right, so submitting the blueprint to Washington County Health and then posting the blueprint on the website and submitting that to ODE, and that's due by August 15. So there's a lot of this information. I won't go through it all, but this is actually from the CDC who originally sent this out and a little bit of a flowchart. We're right in the middle between step one and step two there, trying to get to the blueprints that that has to have our plan in there and how we're going to do all of the protocols and then getting that implemented and into place and opening and monitoring. All of this can be found on the ODE guidance. Just to talk about the blueprint a little bit, one, two, and three, that's the main bulk of that is the bulk of the blueprint. It's putting everything in place as far as screening and face coverings and all the different things, the cleaning and and how do you respond to outbreak and all of that. That will be mapped out in the blueprint. It's pretty general. A lot of it is creating protocols and then going from there. So one of the main topics of discussion is the face coverings. And I'm just going off the current guidance here. And I've received several emails from staff and just people in general of the face masks. As of right now, I will tell you that the guidance says we recommend six through 12. I think we have ways around that to require, but they are not recommending that K5 wear masks at this time. And I know when this guidance came out, it was June 30. The new guidance will be coming out July 21st, that's next Tuesday. And I expect this to be addressed in there because, as you know, since the old guidance in the July 21st guidance, the governor has ordered masks both indoor and outdoors, so in no groups more than 10. I will say, though, that people have to remember as the governor releases these and does these press conferences, the ODE guidance is the guidance we follow until that is changed. So no matter what the governor says, that doesn't apply to schools unless it is addressed in the guidance. So the order doesn't overturn the guidance. But I understand the concern on this, and I also am concerned with this as well. And we have ordered the appropriate PPE. We've worked with Sodexo, who has access to some pretty cheap PPE, but those numbers are going to be adding up as we get face masks, shields, plastic barriers, all sorts of stuff. The other main part that drives this, especially in our planning, that creates not, I mean, creates space issues, but also staffing issues, is establishing a minimum of 35 square feet per person, maintaining social distancing and daily activities instruction, six feet to the maximum extent possible. And then really narrowing it down to the minimum number of cohorts as possible. Obviously, the ideal amount of cohorts is you ride the bus, and that's one cohort. And you go into a class, and that's your other cohort. So keeping cohorts minimized as much as possible, cleaning and wiping surfaces. And that can be done by students, staff, and also custodians. And we're working with Sodexo on pinpointing down, you know, our cleaning protocols fall. And then staff who move from different cohorts, because they recommend that staff are the one that move, not the students, so the students remain in the same room with the same cohort to wash and sanitize hands between interactions. Volunteers and visitors should be limited, and all visitors will be screened upon entry. And there'll be protocols for checking students in and checking students out. And then the transportation is the other hurdle. But I have Midco currently calling the 275 families that rode the bus last year, just doing a kind of a head count. Once we get people registering for online only, that could eliminate some busing. So based on the numbers right now, I think we will be fine with transportation. You can fit about 24 on our regular bus, and that gives every kid a seat. And they also put in the guidance, the exposure on a bus are reduced by the three feet of distance in combination with the seat backs. So every student has their own seat. And Marjorie and Darla, you're famous, but took a few pictures. We went in, we mapped out seven by five areas or six by six or whatever fit in the room. This is one of the elementary rooms. And if you add up, as you look at these, if you add up these, you add up these spaces, you're looking at 20, and that includes the teacher if you map it out. Obviously, all of this extra furniture will be removed. We need to remove for the majority of furniture. The nice thing about the elementary is the tables are a little under five feet long. So each student will have one table in this area. This is an example of a room at the middle school, one of our lab rooms, where these cannot be removed in the back there. But the good thing is, is there is a couple of sinks, so we can encourage a hand washing and hygiene. And, you know, we're trying to maximize the space as much as possible. You know, you see toward the back here, I mean, there could be a student in between there. There could be a student in the back over by in between those two counters and over here. But there's an emergency eye wash machine, so I think, I think a student pulled that once when I was in high school, so we want to make sure we don't do that. We'll have a lot of water in that room. So this is just what we've been looking at at rooms, and how can we maximize? Because you, you can take the square footage and you can divide it by 35, and you might get 21 or 22. But once you go in and map it out, you're looking at like 18, 19, because that number, you have to include the staff member and potentially another staff member. So you want to leave a little wiggle room as far as maybe an extra spot. And so we'll put occupancy totals on the doors and things like that of how many can be in each room based on the square footage. As we listen tonight, as we listen to our presentations for the principals, we must equity must live at the heart of every decision, every action in the service of students for our students of color, our bilingual students, students experiencing disabilities, navigating poverty, our LGBTQ students. And I also added our tag students, so we have to be aware of the students that are taking and need enrichment in their AP courses and also also the dual credit college courses. We want to make sure we provide extra support for all of the, all of the these groups if needed. This is what you've probably seen, you've probably seen it in the paper. Schools are starting to release their plans. You're seeing a lot of hybrid plans. You call it a hybrid unless everybody's onsite every single day. There are some school districts that are doing a comprehensive distance learning, and that is just online only. You know, recently, Los Angeles, San Diego, and a lot of the bigger school districts not in Oregon went to completely online for the start of the school year. So it'll be interesting to follow that. And districts, I think, New York released a hybrid plan today. And so a lot of districts in this area you've seen have released a two-day hybrid plan with Portland Public being probably the main one you might have read in Oregonia. Some instructional models in the 2021, as you, as you hear these things to consider. So instructional time, the Division 22 standards, we have to meet a certain instructional time. We expect a lot of things in Division 22 standards to go away for this year and basically get told do the best you can. The instructional models you see tonight, I need to finalize a model ASAP after listening to the board, to the presentations from the principals. And, you know, they've had their meetings and they continue to receive feedback. They've sent a lot of emails out to staff, and they're just receiving feedback quite a bit in the last, and they continue to receive it. So need to finalize a model based on what we can do with our staffing, but also with our and keeping safety in mind as well. The other thing I would just like to mention, an instructional schedule, but also an academic calendar. There's, we were scheduled to start before before Labor Day. And I feel it would be appropriate, and we're not, I'm not asking you to decide tonight, but we, I feel we need to adjust our district calendar to allow for two weeks of preparation for this. Not only do we have to do professional development for our for our online curriculum platform and getting that professional development provided by the ESD, but we need to get all of our safety protocols. We're going to have a lot of trainings on those and then having dry runs without students. But we're going through pretending we have students showing up, who's going to be at what door, and make sure we have our schedules just nailed, nailed down. So we are very prepared when we do let students into the building. I did put the credit earning assurance plan and credit by proficiency. There are some flexible things we can do at the high school. And then I just wanted to note, you know, lab, CTE, performing arts, and PE. They said at much higher risk for disease spread, they're throwing out 11 feet on that. CTE, you have a lot of shared equipment, same with PE. Performing arts, whenever you're singing, playing band, there's a lot of there's a lot of what's the professional word? The molecules are being put into the air, being forced into the air more than just talking normal. The other thing, you'll see this a lot, and I just want to mention this because right now, we're here on the left, we are looking at onsite and/or hybrid learning model where all students are here, you know, certain number of days per week as much as we possibly can. But we need to be ready to respond to an outbreak. And those outbreaks could be, it could happen in a class, it could happen potentially in an entire school in two or three different cohorts. And but this could also happen statewide. And at any time, we could be told that we need to go to distance learning. And I want to just talk a little bit about the distance learning. And I want everybody to put spring out of their mind. We did the best we can with what we had and the time we had. But getting a platform with online curriculum and an online platform that's easy for students and parents to use, they're going to have a much different experience this year. If we do have to go to distance learning. The other part is the accountability piece. There's going to be grades, just like there were before. We're going to be assessing. And in order to do this, we have to be prepared to go in and out of closures. So we could start this year, there could be an outbreak statewide, it could be getting worse. It could happen in one of our schools, and then everybody will need to go online. And also, if a particular cohort gets quarantined, they will have to be quarantined for 14 days. So they will go on all online with their teacher. So scenarios like that. And then, you know, if we do get to short-term distance learning, we may be given the go-ahead to come back, or they may shift us to something like you've seen last spring. Now, those are things we cannot control when we get told by ODE or the state, we have to close down. Those are things we cannot, we cannot control. As the principals present their plans after working with their school teams, and they'll continue to work with their school teams. And the other part of moving forward with a plan, and I need to make a final decision, is you know, this is step one of 150. They have a lot of planning to do. We have to figure out where staff are going to be, how to shift staff, where are we going to best fit staff, because we're going to have a lot of movement. And there's no way to avoid that as we try and get, especially when we focus on K5, getting them in as much as possible. We're focusing on all students, but especially focusing at the lower grades. And we need to consider student-saf safety, academic needs of our students, what is a good, what is a quality setting for learning? And then planning safety protocols, the transportation needs, the PPE needs, and just the overall educational experience of the students. And just to mention, an educational experience of the students, I think of kindergartners and first graders coming back to school or just even starting school for the first time. We are going to have to really focus in on social emotional support for our kindergartners and also just getting them to understand proper social distancing. Because kindergarten, you know, it's trying to learn how to interact socially. There's a lot of hands-on and hands-on playing and learning and discovering and all of that stuff. And it's, it's going to be a challenge with our lower grades for sure on getting them to understand social distancing and what is and is not appropriate. So. Okay, that, that was the last slide to hand over to the principals. So is, is there any questions on my presentation before I switch over to switch over to Mr. Pence to start with the high school? Do I need you unmuted, Ron?
He is.
Sorry, I thought you could.
I don't know if Dan is in the same boat.
Yeah. I'm getting Dan, I'm getting you too, Dan. Sorry. All right, so all board members are unmuted.
Real quick for you, as I understand it, this plan is based off of what the state said our budget was going to be, correct?
Yeah, so this, the, the plan that I will finalize is based on $9 billion. So for them to backfill, but then also to receive 63% of our SIA Measure 98 funds. And as of right now, that is what we've heard. They will release the SIA and Measure 98 on August 1st. And then the $9 billion becoming a reality will be done in the special legislative session. And I have not seen a date on that yet. So we're going to assume the best.
I'm just, just to be perfectly clear, which I think, I think you just said, is when you say we need additional staff, that's, that's going to go beyond the budget. And the budget we're considering is the conventional budget plus Measure 98 plus what percentage of SIA we're getting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, when you showed the that transition between kind of distance learning and onsite and onsite, you know, kind of, I mean, I understand that we're going to have issues.
Yes, one.
Who dictates? Who actually dictates whether we come back or or not? Or, I mean, is this something you work with Washington County on? Because I mean, I don't see ODE doing infectious disease prevention and control. I mean, this seems like a Washington County thing, not ODE.
Correct, so the part where, let's say, a cohort, there's a, there's a case in a cohort. That's when I contact Washington County, I consult with them, and then they give me recommendations.
Okay.
And then, and that could be a short-term distance learning for that cohort only. You inform everyone and so on and so on. Others may choose to do a short term. Where you're talking statewide, that would be something like the governor did in the spring, where she just shuts everything down. So usually, in this scenario, it would be working with Washington County Health. They're working on protocols and flowcharts, so we know exactly who to call, exactly who to share the contact logs with. And so we're working with that to get that process all smooth before the school year starts.
And just to kind of circle back on the mask thing, I mean, obviously, we're going to curb transmission if we wear masks and we require masks. Is it something that the school board could make a motion and actually amend the rules for the school to require masks until we deem it's not necessary anymore?
So my answer would be no, you cannot. I think there is ways around, and I will say as far as recommended six through 12. When it says recommended six through 12, it says you cannot deny them an education if they do not wear one. But if they refuse to wear one, you could say, well, then they are going to be doing online. I mean, so you could do, I, I've heard, and thank you for sending me the Medford thing, because that's a very good, that's a very nice document. They state that in there, like, they're going to require, and they say five, but I don't know how they're doing that. But six through 12 is required. And if you refuse to wear them, I think you can say, well, then you're online then. The K5 is still, they're recommending not wearing them. I can ask that question, because Dan, I have the same concerns you do. And I've heard from several staff members who have concerns about that as well, about face cover.
I mean, if it were possible, I would say at least I would be in favor of making a rule for this year to make it mandatory.
Yeah.
It is everywhere else you go.
Right, I don't, I don't disagree with that, Dan. So I, let's see what comes out July 21st. And if it's, nothing changes, then I'll ask this question for, can we, I guess the word would be overrule ODE. I don't, I'm 99% sure we can't, but are there ways? Are there certain things we can do to get that changed?
I think it's called apologizing later.
Yeah, yeah. Add it to the list, right? Anybody else, before we move on to Mr. Pence? All right, Mr. Pence, let me bring up the document. You are up, I will unmute you. Start your video. And I'm getting there. Everything brought up, just so I can. All right, Mr. Pence, you're going to have to help me out a little bit. Just tell me when to advance, Jacob, okay?
Okay, I, I probably wasn't going to go in great detail. The board has a copy of our brainstorming form that we've used for the high school. It was about an hour and a half when I went through it with our high school staff members. We probably don't have time to do that with each of our principals tonight. So I'll, I'll try to gloss over some of this. But as far as the principals at the high school, our guiding principals, really looking at safety for students and staff, and knowing with this pandemic going on, there is going to be some risk. But recognizing that education's important, and I think people would agree that it's more effective when it's in person rather than online. And here are some of the things from the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance that I highlighted there. Things about physical distancing and how we calculated the occupancy for each room, that 35 square foot per room at the high school. This is the first time I can say that our facility has a benefit, I think, over the other newer facilities. But we have lots of big rooms. Some of our classrooms and shop areas and, and some of our areas are pretty large. So we can definitely fit a lot of kids in the school. I think when I, when I checked it, maximum occupancy was up in the 600s for utilizing all of our spaces at the high school. Now, we don't have enough staff to necessarily pull that off, but we have plenty of room. Some of the guidance, some changes at the high school would be like limiting lockers, locker usage, anywhere where there'd be more shared items, people in the halls, things like that, social distancing. I mentioned masks there, that staff would be required, students recommended. I agree with what's been said earlier, that I think that would definitely be beneficial if the guidance comes out and says that masks would be required. As you guys mentioned, that's when you pop into a grocery store or anywhere around town right now, that's what's going on. So it'd be great to see that in schools as well, to help provide some more safety for our staff and students. I mentioned in here, I was in a couple of different webinars with a gal named Candace Pelt. She's an assistant superintendent with ODE and walked us through some of this guidance. And one of the things, I'm, I'm not an expert on COVID, but one of the things that kind of surprised me when she talked about it is just the frequent light cleaning, even a li- a light bleach solution, things like that. Wiping things down would be better than like a really heavy deep clean. And so I'm thinking of ways that we could do that and having possibly staff and students being responsible enough to be able to do some of that in our classrooms and spaces. I think we need to plan for some markings on the floor and signage and things like that around the high school. I think with our 28 entrance and exit doors, we're going to be very clear about where people enter the building and exit the building with the requirements of screening people as they come in with the entry arrival procedures. And then also, we've had a sick room where kids get sick in the past, and that's not going to work anymore as far as the isolation procedures. So we'll have to figure out some new places for that if students are ill or show symptoms. Second guiding principle was try, trying to provide as much instruction in person as possible. And with our instruction models, looking at how we can cohort kids together, where they would stay together and not rotate. I would say in a normal year where we have that AB schedule, one through eight, you know, that would be eight different cohorts. So that model, we kind of need to throw out the window, that's too many. So how can we reduce the number of interactions that different students have with groups of students and staff that try to make it safer? And so cohorting, trying to keep them small and stable. One of the ways is having students stay in the rooms and teachers rotate. I think there will need to be, with some of our electives that we need to offer for graduation, there will need to be some movement of students. So it won't be completely students staying in one room all day, but where possible, we'll try to do that. We may need to change some class offerings around and what teachers teach. Looking at our FTE, the sections we offer, we'll be working on that. And skipping down, you can see our enrollment for next year. This usually isn't great for school funding, but it's great in this case. This is one of the smallest groups we've had in the high school. I believe the smallest since my time in Banks, I think coming on 18 years. We're looking 351 students at the high school, and that would be if every student attended. I think when I started in Banks, we had over 420 students. So 350 makes it more manageable in some of these things that we're looking at in class sizes and occupancy. We have a really small freshman class with only 70 students. And I'll just scroll down, Jeff, to our, our plans here. These are the classes we have to offer and graduation requirements. We've been looking at students' transcripts, starting with seniors and seeing what they actually need to graduate, and trying to look at our forecasting numbers. We usually do that in the spring. That's where students log into the computer and they sign up for which classes they would like to take or elect to take. And that might be, you know, every student needs an English class, but they might choose to take the honors English class or the AP English class versus the regular class. So making sure they're in the right math classes, making sure they have all the credits they need for graduation. We usually do that during the spring, and that was after the distance learning started. And there's always some students that don't fill that out. This year, we had quite a few more students. We still need about 100 students to fill out their forecasting. And I think Mr. Rice is going to be working on getting those kids to fill out their forecasting to help us with this process of what, what courses kids need. It's mostly juniors and seniors who didn't fill out the forecasting. Almost all, all our freshmen and sophomores have done that. And this is where we start getting into the plans. As far as an update for the high school, we had three teachers volunteer for being part of the planning committee. Not, not a lot of teachers signed up to be part of the process, so I'm hoping more, more teachers get involved with that, including myself, Mr. Buchanan, and our counselor. It made a team of six, and Jeff sat in with us on Monday. We met this week on Monday, so a lot of teachers backpacking, camping, things like that last week. So we tried to, had to plan it for this week. And once I shared this brainstorming document with the rest of the high school staff, I had a lot more feedback come in today. And so there'll be quite a few more questions, suggestions, concerns that we add to this list. As I explained to the team, it's kind of a, a living document that we'll continue to edit and update as we work through this plan. So with that, lots of feedback. And then where we go from here in timelines and, and settling on this, I think it's important to get a survey out to parents. I mentioned 351 students. Jeff mentioned some students might opt for online. I think all parents are anxious about what we're going to do next year. And so I think that's important as we work through these plans to figure out what we're going to do is, is survey parents. This first plan is a five-day-a-week. And so no matter what plan we talk about here, five days a week, four days a week, hybrid, one of the things that we looked at changing would be having students focus on only four courses at a time, rather than our usual eight. Even though this is like a five-days-a-week in-person instruction, this would be, this would be a little bit different here, because we would be having students just focus on four classes. In order to do that, they would attend the same number of classes in a semester that they would normally attend in a year. So after nine weeks, they would earn a half credit. And after a semester, they would earn a full year credit, and then they would transfer to a new four classes. And that would help reduce the amount of things that students need to focus on, also help with teachers and their different preps. And so I think that that's something that I'm going to recommend, no matter which plan we stick with. When I look at five days a week on paper, with our current staffing, if we add the 16 and a half FTE, I think we could do it if we utilize the larger spaces like the gym, the cafeteria. You know, we would have to get pretty creative with our master schedule, people teaching maybe outside their content area. But is it possible? I, I think so. But it would be pretty difficult to pull off. But, but I, it is possible. There are some things where we really need to look further at the data as far as exactly which kids need which classes to determine the specific sections that we need to fit within the occupancy, and looking at those larger classes that would maybe need to use those larger spaces. I didn't, on, on each of mine, you might see later, I, I didn't put classified staff as far as needing additional classified staff. That's one thing that might be a possibility. As we look at, in our contract, our collective bargaining agreement, teachers have a 30-minute duty free lunch. And trying to figure out what we usually do for lunches is typically students have open campus. So lunch bell rings and they go a different direction. Some sit in the hallways and eat their lunch they brought from home. Some go to the cafeteria and get a hot lunch. Kids drive or walk down to gym, driveway or subway or go pick up a lunch. Depending on what we do with our lunches, if that's a closed campus, which we've considered, or an open campus, there might need to be some additional of our lunches. So that's something that we need to figure out as well. The second plan, four days a week, on a four-day-a-week plan, we would be in better shape as far as being able to meet the in-person instruction. Because we would plan to have teacher prep on that one day a week that there isn't in-person learning or students in the building. So instead of on a five-day-a-week where teachers are teaching three out of four classes, and one of the four classes is their prep time, in four days a week, they'd be able to teach four out of their four classes. So that'd be, you know, our 16 and a half staff members times four. They offer a lot more, lower class size, and we wouldn't have the occupancy issues. Again, it would still be close. We wouldn't have to get as creative as the large spaces we'd be using and things like that. It would offer a lot more, but that would be a big change. Teachers not having prep except for one day a week and making sure that, as Jeff was mentioning, some of these online academies or kids doing the online classes, we have teachers teach. When will they find to interact with those kids doing online? And our third option that we considered is a hybrid schedule. And I think Jeff mentioned, that's one we're seeing that's pretty common among high schools around the state as they're starting to release plans. This is definitely doable with our class size. Basically, half of the students would attend Monday, Tuesday. And they would have four classes, so they would go periods one through four on Monday, and they would get the first lesson of that class. They'd go on Tuesday and get the second lesson of that class. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they would be working on their own or online at home and have Chromebooks and devices, working through some online curriculum or homework assignments or projects at home from our staff members. And that would be where they would get their third, fourth, and fifth days of instruction. On Thursday, Friday, the other half of the students would attend. And so that equals 175, 176 kids in the building at any given time. That really lowers our class size. And so with the occupancy, we would have essentially some extra FTE. So we wouldn't need to offer as many sections as we normally do in a few subject areas. There's a few subjects or departments where we have only a couple teachers or even one teacher for the entire department. And so that, that really, it'd be difficult to change anything there. But we have other departments that have, you know, three or four staff members, where if you start looking at, you know, the maximum occupancy and things like that, we, we'd be in pretty good shape at the high school for the hybrid schedule. Do worry about high school students, teenagers in general, and responsibility and doing homework. And, you know, having those students for those three days doing assigned work, required work, I think it would look much different than it did in the spring when we were doing distance learning, because that was publicized that it was optional by the governor's order, that distance learning could not affect your grade if you're passing, you've passed. And a lot of teenagers figured that out and didn't necessarily participate in a lot of our distance learning and online activities. I believe with next year, even if it was shifting to distance learning, or if we were doing these AB hybrid, the, the homework would have to be done. We, we can't do what we did last year. Things would have to be ramped up and things would be required to be completed at home on their time. I think that high school kids are more capable, maybe, than some of our lower grades, K through eight, of accomplishing that. But they're also teenagers, and we're going to have to work on that. And really, as Jeff mentioned, with our kindergartners and first graders, teaching them about school and social emotional and, and all the things that they need to learn about school, I think we even need to reteach our high school students just about what it looks like to be a successful student in these different models and expectations and, and making sure they know what they need to do to be successful. So those are the three plans we worked at, we looked at and are considering for the high school. And Jeff, you scroll down a little bit. As I mentioned, this was just a few questions, concerns, suggestions that we had from our initial small group. I have quite a few to add from that, from emails from staff that took place today. So I don't know if Jeff will continue to share this with the board, or if you guys would like me to keep you updated. But I have quite a few to add to that list. Mostly around safety for staff and students, protocols. Some of the information we still need from the Washington County Health Department. Some of the stuff I think it'll help if we get some surveys out to parents and, and kids. And that's another thing I would like to include kids in this, students in this, and try to give them a voice and ask them how they feel about school next year and, and what they imagine it looking like and what they need. We've talked about purchasing an online curriculum, and not all the staff are in favor of that. I mean, some of our staff have a pretty well-developed curriculum, or certain classes like AP have a very prescribed curriculum that you need to go through. And they would prefer to do something like the Google Classroom. I think with purchasing an online curriculum throughout the district would really help parents and kids to be able to have one platform that they could use. I know Acelis comes with a product called Canvas that provides a little bit more in-depth interaction. You can add discussion boards and customize the curriculum and add things. And so I'd be interested in, in going over that with the staff. And as Jeff mentioned, maybe I'm at the beginning of the school year to help teachers within service and, and planning and getting comfortable with that. Some other things we're considering is our bell schedule. Do we, I mentioned getting creative. Do we need to have two lunches in order to get the kids socially distant, get staff their lunchtime by contract? Different staggered arrivals and dismissals, again, providing more social distancing with our screenings at the door. That'll be kind of all hands on deck, as Mr. Buchanan said this week, of, of, we have a lot of kids that show up at one time, and that's usually two minutes before the bell rings. So getting all those kids screened at the doors and getting them in. Being creative with our master schedule and doing everything we can to provide a, a well-rounded education for high school kids. This is an important time that they get to explore their different interests and their last opportunity to get a free education. And doing our best to look at what we can do to cohort kids together, grouping them. We've talked about maybe English and social studies could be a good cohort. Maybe math and science would be a different cohort, that they would stay in the same class and teachers rotate. And then with some of our electives, as I mentioned, there, there might have to be a little bit of shifting. And it looks like, and when I read the guidance, it has some flexibility for high school to be able to do that. And one of the other things we're looking at, we, we changed the rule, I believe, a year ago, maybe two years ago, about students needed to be fully enrolled in all of the grades. We used to have quite a few students take early, early release or late arrival. And that might be something we look at as offering again. Depending on how our master schedule works out, sometimes there's one or two electives. And if the student doesn't take that, there's a, they need to be somewhere. And in the past, that's been like an elementary school TA or a high school TA, middle school TA going around and doing that, or a study lab. And a lot of those might not be options anymore. I definitely don't think with the cohorts and having people mixing between schools that we want to have high school students going to the middle school or elementary school to be TAs. And so that is kind of as brief as I can be where we're at with the high school. I'm, I'm feeling some anxiety and some stress here that we're on a pretty tight timeline to have this all wrapped up and all the details ironed out to be, have this complete and approved by ODE by August 15th. And then also staff coming, you know, a couple of weeks after that, right before Labor Day, we can have before Labor Day to start in-service week and have them trained and, and get ready for the school year. It's a, it's definitely a, a unique year and one that's going to be difficult to get through. But I'm, I'm confident that we can make it happen with the plan we go with and make it as best we can for the kids at, at Banks High School. Any questions for me?
Jacob, I guess I have one. You mentioned no matter what you're looking at for, you know, kind of breaking down the eight-period class to four-period. Is that right?
Yeah.
So are you, but we're not changing the start time or end time? So we're basically extending the period of class for teaching for that particular class?
So right now, we, the students usually take four periods each day. And so they go to their period one through four, and then the next day, five through eight. So it would be a similar schedule. Is, does that what you mean as far as a daily schedule, what that might look like?
Yeah, I guess, and I, I guess I didn't, I wasn't thinking about it. Right, that they're already taking four classes. We're not talking about a class that lasts, you know, hours or something like that. We've already kind of broken it down.
Yeah, they're, right now, they're eighty-eight minutes. You know, if kids need to rotate classes, some kids will be staying in classes. Maybe we just turn the bells off for the year, right? There might be a little bit of passing time as we go have one class move through the hall at a time if we need to do some moving, rather than having three hundred and fifty kids in the hallway. When kids arrive, things like that. So I think there might be a need to actually change our daily schedule a little bit. And possibly different, you know, two different lunches and things like that. So I think we can be, we can be flexible, we can be creative with that. And they'll be within our minutes that we need. Like, like Jeff said, that the minute might go away anyways, but we want to keep it, the, the in-person instruction, the minutes up as much as we can.
The other question that I had was, I know some students are getting honor degrees. Is that basically stuff, is that type of extra effort? Some of the kids that are already been in high school, like so those seniors, is that out the window because they're not taking additional AP classes? Or what's, is that something the board needs to adjust?
So right now, we have an honors diploma policy. That's a school board policy that says exactly what they need to complete. And for example, this last year, there were some seniors who were on track to get the honors diploma at the time of the closure. They had taken the correct classes, they'd done different things. But maybe they couldn't get their community service hours. You know, because everything's closed. They go, what do they do? So we, we made the decision to not bar any kid from earning that diploma if they were on track for that. And, and that's something that I definitely want to continue to recognize those kids for their hard work. This year, we already have, every, every senior will not be on track to meet that because they weren't able to take the state test last year. And that's a requirement of the honor diploma, you have to pass the state test. And so there's already going to have to be some review of that. But it's my goal that we don't take that honor away from anybody if they were on track. And, you know, this, this is going to be a scheduling nightmare with the master schedule and making sure kids can take the classes they need to graduate or stay on track to graduate and, and keep that going and make that fit for every kid. It, it's difficult in a good year, trying to make that. There's always, you know, kids want to take certain classes and they have to make a choice. And, and this year, it'll probably make that a little bit tougher and more choices. Or they might not have a choice. We might say, here, here are the electives that, that work with your schedule and you'll take these. I mentioned this in one of my plans, an elective wheel. And this is something you might see easily in like a middle school model, but you might go to an elective for six weeks and then rotate to a different elective for six weeks and a different elective six weeks. And that's something I think we could look at, like the freshmen, to expose them to all the different electives we have at the high school and things like that, and they'll get elective credit. Once you look at juniors and seniors, they've already taken some different ones and they're usually in the advanced courses and things like that. It doesn't work as well with that elective wheel. But I think we can get creative and come up with some ideas that will still provide kids those opportunities. And I'm, I'm glad Jeff mentioned, you know, trying to make sure the equity piece too for our tag kids as well. Trying to provide dual credit opportunities still through Lam Promise or PCC. Also, the AP classes, trying to continue to offer those, I think is really important.
It seems like it'd be easiest to kind of dictate the freshman class, whether they were going to be, you know, what classes they were going to be taking and kind of split them up based on kind of science and math classes, probably. But I don't envy you with the sophomores, juniors, and seniors trying to schedule that. That's, that's heroic, to say the least.
Freshmen, there's a little bit of variation, but each year it gets wider and wider and wider. The, the differences in where kids are at, what they're taking and focusing on.
So you mentioned that some of the teachers have written back, have any, had any concerns about wearing masks or not wearing masks, things like that?
I had one staff member ask if they were going to be required to wear a mask. And I shared, yeah, that's the current guidance. And I had a lot of teachers ask, why aren't kids required to wear masks? And I, we, we've shared the guidance. I mean, it's, it's pretty lengthy, it's a pretty dry feed as you go through that, even for an educator that's working in this business to, to go through and pick out each detail. But something that we'll share is that currently the guidance says you should not require masks for students. And I think they're worried about, as Jeff said, if a student comes and refuses to wear masks, that they would be barred from getting an education because of that. And I hope that the guidance changes. And, you know, I think that's a, during these current times, a reasonable request, ask high school students to wear a mask. And we have a great CTE program where we could design custom, that every kid could make their own. I don't know, we could print them for them, you know, we could try to make it fun, come up with some design competition or so. But I, I, I think we're going to have to come up with lots of ideas to try to make this fun for kids this year. And, you know, anything that we can do. But one of the big concerns that was repeated from the staff concerns that maybe wasn't in my list was why are students not being required to wear masks? For all the students' safety and the staff.
So I've heard from other districts that up to, you know, that have sent out a survey to parents about whether their kids are becoming to school or not in the fall. That up to twenty percent may not be coming back either due to homeschooling or strictly online. Do you have any feeling for that here? I mean, if it's up to twenty percent, we would, we would obviously shrink our population quite a bit.
I think we need to survey them and find out. But anecdotally, even if kids leave, they always come back to graduate at Banks. You know, the kids want to finish, they're here. I, I think a lot of kids will want to return to Banks High School and, and do some, as much in-person as they can. I know they're still holding out for sports and are we going to have dances this year? You know, everybody's hoping for some normalcy and all these things. And, and I, I'm, I'm hopeful that as many as possible will want to have some of that in-person experience. But I understand that we do have some students that have health risks. They have parents at home that are, you know, as it mentions in there, maybe cancer treatment, things like that, that we have to be sensitive to, that being in person or being around that big group might not be the best option for them right now. And so if we have another opportunity that we can provide like this online academy, that kids can still get an education and be a Banks School District student, but do that online, if we can make that the best possible way for them to get an education because of their circumstances or for some reason they can't attend or won't attend. I think that would be great to have as backup plan.
Dan, and just to share the survey we did at the end of the year, you know, your comfort level of sending your kid back to school in the fall. And this was, you know, mid-June, and I shared that with the board, I think, maybe the second board meeting or, but it was around fifteen percent. I think the number will be higher at the elementary than the high school. But you could be looking at between ten to fifteen percent. And based on what's been happening, maybe that number does go up. So that's the part of the urgency to get something out because it's hard to decide without looking at a model to decide whether you're going to go online or not.
And that changes our planning quite a bit, Dan. If we have, if we, Banks will up to twenty percent opt out of whatever plan we offer. You know, with only three hundred and fifty kids right now, that would be pretty significant.
Sixty kids, seventy. One last question, sorry, I'll try to keep it brief. So you talked about cramming basically a class into one semester. Would that help with kind of graduating some of the seniors early? Could they be done? Could you kind of move the schedule around so that most of them got the classes they need to be finished in the middle of January instead of having to wait? And I mean, that would reduce the number of students in the school at any time as well. Because I don't see this changing by January.
So that is a great question, Dan. Yes, most of our seniors need about three credits. And if we're offering four classes and we scheduled that to where they took senior English, senior health, and govern econ in the fall semester, they would be done in January. And that would be forty of our seniors.
Would they be considered full-time students though, Jeff?
No, so they, they would drop off the books after January. And so we, we would not receive funding for that senior for the whole year. I did email ODE that question and they're supposed to get back to me. But that specific question of, if a senior graduates early just to create more space so we can get more kids and more time, what is OD doing anything for just this year to waive that? So I haven't heard back from them yet. It's a good idea, but then if they do lose the funding, that could be a pretty big blow too as well. So, but you have to weigh the pros and the cons on that. But I'll, I'll let you know when I hear.
Anyone else? Will, were you raising your hand or? Well, thank you, guys. It's been a, it's been an interesting summer and we, we got a lot of work ahead of us. But I appreciate you guys and your support always of the school.
All right, let me share, Darla, you're next. The sun shines just perfectly in my office during this time. So I'm ducking out of the way so I can see my screen. You there? There's Darla.
Yeah, I'm just waiting.
You're wait, you're waiting for me, I know.
All right, looks good. So I'll go ahead and I'll get started. A lot of the things that Jacob talked about are things that are going on at the high school, especially around the guiding principles are the same things that we're talking about at the middle school. For me, the big thing at the middle school is trying to reduce the number of contacts that the adults and the students have during the day, keeping it safe as possible. And so one of our big focus and priority will be having those small, stable cohorts. So that as we move through the schedules that I'm presenting, that is kind of a number one priority is keeping those cohorts small and stable so that we're limiting the number of contacts for everyone during the day. I did meet with my staff last week and I had about ten staff members who volunteered to meet. And we actually had a really great meeting. I was really impressed with the, the really positive attitude and their willingness to be really flexible, their desire to come back to school and to see the students. But also, you know, they shared a lot of concern about safety and about, you know, whether we'll have all the guidelines and protocols in place to make sure that we're keeping the adults and the students safe. And so we did talk a lot about that. We're meeting again tomorrow to continue the discussion. But they've come up with some really great questions and suggestions. And, you know, it's hard to put all of the things that we've learned and that we've talked about in all of our meetings at the state and local level into a document like this because there's so much that is on my mind. But, you know, we'll get through this. And I know we have a great team, both at the school and the district level, to be able to make this successful. So I created four plans just to kind of look at some different options so that we can find that just right option for the middle school. First one is a hybrid schedule, like Jacob talked about. It would be where one group would come on Monday and Tuesday, and then another group would come on Thursday and Friday. Teachers would have their prep that they would normally have spread out over the week. They would have that Wednesday for the most part. And when we measured the middle school, we could have, we could fit about nineteen students per class. And I think that at the middle school, we've been talking about going with a homeroom model, much more like an elementary school model than a high school model. Again, to limit the contact. And we talked about having it kind of split up into, half the day they would be in a humanities block where they would have English Language Arts and Social Studies. And then half the day they would be in a STEM block where they would have science and math. It would be up to the homeroom teacher then to provide, you know, movement breaks and some create, creative time, some elective type of activities and things during the day. Because like Jacob said, also, you know, I think one of the big challenges for us this year is going to be making school a great place for kids to be where they want to come and they're excited to be there and they feel good and they feel safe. So that'll be a big priority for us. So the hybrid model, we would have fifteen classes of nineteen students. And this is just going off the numbers that we currently have. And we would have enough staff to cover the hybrid model just fine. And we would need, the only thing we would need is three to four full-time assistants. And they would cover all the teachers' lunches and the breaks on those four days. I also looked at doing the sixth grade a little bit different than, differently than the seventh and eighth grade. So I looked at what if we brought sixth grade in four days a week? And then we put seventh and eighth on a hybrid. Again, nineteen students per class, prep on Wednesdays for the teachers. Probably with the hybrid schedules, we would not need to blend grades at all. We could probably keep our, the grades separate, which would be different from a four-day week or a five-day week. But every certified teacher is basically going to be a classroom teacher. And we would have enough space to do this. And we would have enough teachers. This would really stretch us very thin to do a four days for sixth grade and then a hybrid for seventh and eighth. We could possibly do it, but then we would need full, for full-time assistance to cover lunches and breaks. I think the downside of this one, it would be having sixth grade on a different schedule than seventh and eighth grade. And it would stretch us pretty thin. But we probably could accommodate this one as well with room space. So then the next one that...
Can you hold on a second? I'm having...
Well, you look like you're blinded by this.
I'm trying to do seven things at once here, so while I'm blinded, so. Excellent. There you go.
All right, thanks. So a four-day week, we looked at a four-day week, again, the same number of students, prep on Wednesdays. We would probably have to look at blending some grade levels together to make this one work. Again, every teacher except for Spud would be a classroom teacher. And we would have enough rooms to be able to do this a four-day week. But that would mean we would use the commons, the conference room, the computer lab, the library, the music room. So we would basically in every space in the school. Some of them, I would say, probably not the most conducive to learning, but we could pull it off if we used all of those rooms. For a four-day week at the middle school, we would need four additional certified staff and four to five additional, or four to five full-time EAs, again, to cover lunches and breaks. Where we would need fifteen teachers to be able to do that. And then the five-day week is just a little bit basically the same, except we would need additional assistance because we would even have more prep time, lunches and things like that to cover because we wouldn't have that Wednesday to give teachers prep. So this would definitely by far be the most difficult to do. It would just require, you know, extra staff to be able to pull that off. And again, we would be blending classrooms and things. So those were the four that we talked about in our staff meeting at the time. At that time, the, most of the staff were leaning toward the hybrid model, mostly because when we looked at the additional staff needed for the four or five-day week, we didn't know if that would be feasible with our current situation to be able to have extra staff to pull off a four-day week, so, or a five-day week. So teachers were pretty much in favor and, and feeling positive about the hybrid model. Again, like I said, I think that was partly due because of the additional staff that we would need. The big concerns, I think, are just kind of around movement for the students. How are we going to get them up and get them out of the classroom occasionally so that they're not just sitting in one room all day? Students will have to eat in the classrooms. So that's even, you know, having them in there more often. We talked a little bit about PE, but in all the meetings that we've been in, you know, most of the, most of the middle schools are not doing PE because of the high-risk situation with PE. But we do know that the kids are neat, going to need to get up, get out and move around a little bit. We've also talked about, you know, how to make sure that we provide some activities for them. Like I said, that makes school fun and exciting. We won't do lockers. We'll do all the things that we need to do as far as screening them when they come in, traffic patterns around the school. That's going to be really interesting with the middle school with our tight stairway. It'll be really interesting to map out how students will move around the school. And so we have a lot of... And so we have a lot of work. Once we decide our model, we have a lot of work to do, but I have a great team that is very creative. And I know that we'll be able to put together a great plan for students with whatever model what is selected for the school. So that's kind of what I have. I kind of covered it quick because like I said, Jacob covered a lot of just the overall general guidelines and things that we're doing. But if you have any questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer those or go over those.
This would obviously apply to both yours and the elementary school and maybe completely off, out of, out of bounds. But relative to the, the role, the role need to be filled by classified staff, is there any latitude there to use potentially volunteer people from parents and that kind of thing?
I think that, you know, the guidance that we've gotten is that we want to limit, we want to stay away from having a lot of volunteers in the school. And so I think that we're trying to keep the, as few of the number of people as possible from coming into the school. So I think that that would be the biggest problem probably with volunteers as well as just like scheduling them and reliability of them, making sure that they're there every day. Is it a possibility? I suppose everything's a possibility at this point, but.
Well, my question is from a, from a regulatory standpoint, there's nothing that necessarily keeps them from doing that from a teaching, from a onsite policy or anything like that. It would just be the, the same problems you have with volunteers in general.
And so, Will, the guidance, am I on here? Like I said, I need to get out of the sun here. It's almost down. The guidance states to limit volunteers and visitors.
I understand. That's not what I'm asking. I understand that's the guy I'm asking. I'm from a policy standpoint, eliminate COVID. If you've decided to bring some volunteers in to play some of these roles.
I think that we would need a, a, somebody in charge of the volunteer. So I don't think that we.
Not the question I'm asking. The question I'm asking is there, is there a, is there a, an ODE limitation or a state of Oregon limitation on volunteers filling some of those spots? From an educational standpoint?
Yes. Yeah. So there's limitations, volunteers need to be background checked, but you also have to have, for liability purposes, you have to have a classified or a certified person do supervision like that in a full-time role.
Okay, so it does add some administrative burden to the paid staff to have the volunteer staff there.
Yes. Did that, Will, did that answer?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, this is, this is what I think I, I, I would appreciate separating these discussions because we may have to get creative. And I understand the challenges with, you know, this is just one example. I understand the challenges with volunteers. We may have to look at it differently. We may have to set our paradigm aside if we want a certain, if we just want to choose a certain option here. And some of the things with, we're going to have to challenge or there's some of the things that we've avoided are, are worth looking at again. And so that's why I wanted to know from a purely regulatory standpoint. It's a separate issue about whether volunteers should be in the school during COVID or all that kind of stuff, separate issue. And the answer to that may, maybe yes and maybe no, but it's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that, I think Will, you know, I think we feel the same way. I think we've been trying to rack our brains for, you know, this entire time to think about, how do we think outside the box? Like, there's nothing normal about this school year and really there's nothing very comfortable about it. So we're going to have to be outside our comfort zones and be out of, you know, be out of our normal, how we do things. And so I think all things are on the table, like I said. I just think have to make sure that they are things that legally, you know, we're in a good standing to be able to do them.
Right.
Yeah.
Darla, Will, were you, were you done with your questions?
Yes, thanks.
Darla, I guess I have a couple. One on the hybrid model, what we're talking about is a Monday, Tuesday, and then three days on or off or online, right? I didn't see that in the.
Yeah, and that's the same as high schools as well. So one group would be Mondays and Tuesdays. And then they would be off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The other group would be in on Thursday and Friday. They would be off Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, and would you, I guess, my concern is, is that the expectation of taking a middle school and having them learn online. That, that will level of responsibility, just, I, I just, I struggle with that. That we would get them to understand that, hey, this is, this is the time on the clock, 10 o'clock or whatever. I need to log in to a Zoom meeting for my teacher. I, I guess I, curious how you guys would propose that, that actually worked.
Yeah. So I agree. And one of the things that we talked about that really was a struggle in the spring is that prior to going into the distance model that we used then, we didn't, the students didn't really get any instruction ever because we didn't have the lead-up to it. As far as what does it look like to be an online student? Like, we just kind of said, you're an online student now. There was never any instruction, never any guidance on how to do that. And we've talked as a staff, in order to make this successful for them to be online for, you know, a few days during the week. You know, that would be part of the teaching at the beginning of the year. What does it look like? What are the responsibilities of an online student? And, you know, there are some things that'll help us this time too, as far as things will be graded, you know, there'll be, we'll be able to hold them accountable for that. A teacher will be checking in with them and then they'll have an online curriculum that they could, if they get instruction on Monday and Tuesday, there are going to be certain things that they have to do on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to come back on Monday and be ready to do the in-person learning. So I think that there will be more things in place. I think it is a challenge certainly, but I think that there will be more things in place that will support that. Then we're in the spring for sure.
Yes. The other question was, I didn't see that you were utilizing the gym at all. Is that, what, what was the?
Yeah, we've talked about that. You know, I think we have, I think we can find enough spaces without using the gym. If we did a four-day week, we could use the gym as open, but we did talk about trying to have one space where we could take the kids, you know, on rainy days and even just have them walk around the gym or, you know, just do some yoga, do something gets them out of the classroom because they'll be in the same classroom for the entire day. So we wanted to have one space where there was, we could provide some movement breaks for students on days that weren't sunny when we couldn't take them outside.
I know one of the principles with the design of the school was to keep the circular path where people could walk the hallways. I don't know if they're still doing that or not.
Yeah, we do do that on days when it's raining and we don't take them outside. And we do allow them to do walk around that rectangular area. Yeah.
I guess I was just thinking that the gym space, if you utilize that, you could help with the overall overhead or the number of people that you would need. If you're, you had a much bigger space than, than you could teach using Zoom, teach them on the computer, but then they're actually there. So a teacher is looking at them and you can make sure that they're following along.
Sure.
My biggest concern is that in the online setting for middle school, I, I just don't see them logging in and doing their stuff, what they need to do.
Yeah. And like I said, I under, I understand that concern too. And I think there would have to be a lot of front-loading and a lot of working with them and working with parents as well on what that would look like. Yeah.
It's trying to be and backing up a little bit because there obviously there's a million things to weigh and it's all about what risk with benefit and obligation. But when I step back and look at the whole picture, I can't get over the fact, what I believe to be a reality that, especially when you talk about equity, that somewhere between some big block of students throughout elementary, middle and high school, some big block of students, whether it's 30%, 40%, 50%, whatever, their time at home proposed to be online is going to be lost time. They are not going to learn anything online at home. And that's just such a big number to me. I just can't, and I realize cost is one of the biggest hurdles here and I haven't got a solution for that. But that to me requiring them for two full days to learn online, I just think a huge percentage of them won't. And then you add to that the burden that falls on the parents and how much they're struggling right now to keep their jobs and all that kind of stuff. That's the other, what I, what I'm, what I am putting a lot of weight in as far as the danger. Now, I'm not saying this dick has to dictate the outcome. Those, those are just two concerns, I think, that are, you step back and look at the big picture are just huge influencers.
Can I build up to this for a second and what Ron was saying? I think part of what Ron was getting at is that if we use a gym space, maybe we can in basically have what we would consider two hope, two cohorts together in one space with one teacher, which would save a number of things, a number of teacher spots and stuff that we would need to add on to. The other thing that it does is it, it basically we have, especially with, with both the elementary school and the middle school gyms, there's bathrooms that are immediately adjacent to those spaces. And so the kids could be told that they have to use those bathrooms, which pulls kids out of the normal bathroom usage that they would be in if they were kind of, if we packed them all in the same classroom kind of area. So I think, I think there's benefits and I realize we need to have kids walk around. I mean, maybe we can buy a tent or something and put it up. I don't know. But it just seems like we could, we could basically nail two things with one thing. And that is pulling kids away from having to all use the same bathrooms, stretching them into the gym. And maybe then we can actually combine some classes that make sense. And, you know, obviously maybe there aren't classes that make sense. I don't know what the normal classroom size is right now, Darla. Is it, it's probably over 30 though, I'm guessing, or 20, 28, 29?
Yeah, we're between 25 and 35.
Yeah. I mean, obviously it, it's still better to get them in person and educate them. You could, you know, and I don't know what makes sense with this, but right now you're talking about having five individual homerooms for each class or each grade. And that to me seems like if you could go to four, then we kind of knock down the classified staff that's required for some of these models. And we don't have to hire as many people, which, you know, obviously we haven't budgeted for this year. So I'm just thinking, and I agree with Will and Ron, I, you know, and, and you, we need to be creative and flexible this year. And maybe it's only for six months, you know, who knows? Maybe we can get the all clear once there's a vaccine or something. But, you know, would you consider that? And I don't know what this, you know, obviously there's acoustic issues in the gym that would need to be taken care of, but you know, speaker system could be brought in, I, I think. We probably have one in there.
Yeah, we'd have.
What are your thoughts on that?
You know, I think that with all of this, with weighing the risk and the benefit and weighing quantity or quality. You know, as an educator and, you know, I've been doing this for a while and the thought of, I'm just going to be really honest with you that the thought of putting 30 or more students in the gym with no windows, right? And the acoustics are terrible and saying, now you're going to be in there for four days a week. I don't feel like that's quality education and I get the counterargument that either is being at home. Maybe people think, you know, that's the counter argument. Either home isn't quality education either. So I think, again, that's where we're trying to find the balances, is using the gym and saying it's not quality education necessarily. But that's better than being at home or is being at home better than being in the gym? I don't know. I think that that's where, like I said, we're trying to work through that and trying to decide what is the best way to go and balance the cost of things. It is doable. It is doable and maybe we'll go to that. We might go to that. It's certainly not off the table. Like I said, I just feel like middle school students and, you know, not moving all day, not having a place to go, no windows, sitting in the gym, terrible acoustics. It just sounds like a, a little bit of a circus to me. But I get that we're have to be creative too. So I know that's not an answer at all, but I guess I'm just letting you know, I hear you and I hear your concerns and they're my concerns as well. We just are going to have to continue to work through it.
Darla?
Yeah.
If you, if you did use the gym, how much would that change your plan?
It would probably change it, you know, by one teacher. Like we said, if we combined two cohorts, it would change it by one teacher. And it wouldn't change my classified staff a whole lot. We'd have one less teacher to prep, but.
So it wouldn't change your needs to have them in the school more?
To have, say that again, Raymond?
It wouldn't change the fact that you need more staff in order to have the students at school more instead of at home.
Right. We would still need additional staff.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would go back just, just to talk about the hybrid and that Wednesday, that off day, or whether it's four days a week and there's a Wednesday off day. That Wednesday doesn't rule out kids coming in. Now, in order to reach prep time in the way it's set up, it is, that is a huge challenge. And, but the Wednesday classified staff are going to be available to bring in, and Will, you mentioned like 30 or 40%, to bring in those 30 or 40% that are struggling at each school and bring them in for interventions, but also enrichment if an AP student needs to come in an extra day and things like that. So even in a hybrid, you could push it up to three or even in a four, four days a week, you could push it up to five. Because once we get going and after a couple of weeks, we're going to be rec, be able to recognize and pinpoint in our, in our PLC groups or professional learning communities of pinpointing those students and, and getting them in an extra day. So whether you're in the hybrid, whether you're in the four-day, there is the potential because you have, you know, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but you have multiple classified throughout the district that can have those students come in and guide them through their online learning. So just, just wanted to point that out that that regardless of it's a hybrid or a four-day a week, we plan on bringing in students that extra day. It's not going to be just a complete off day.
I guess my reaction to, and I have read through this in detail and I appreciate all the research. And I know there's still more to learn and I plan, I'm, I'm anxious to hear the rest of the elementary school. Just my initial reaction, it seems like just kind of comprehensively is, is that we could possibly move towards and somehow come up with a universal four-day week for the district. Seems to me like that big picture might be possible and might be the most practical balance. But I realize and we're not done listening and I, and I'm, I'm just trying to be transparent through the process.
Yeah. Anything else about the middle school?
All right. Thank you, Darla.
Thank you.
All right, Marjorie. Get everything in place here. There, there you are.
All right. Hi, everybody.
Let me share my screen.
Alrighty.
Come on.
It's so tiny.
Is it?
I think I need glasses.
I think I need glasses. All right.
Is it, is it?
I mean, can you enlarge it just a little bit?
Is it small, is it small on everybody's screen?
Pretty small. I would assume so, but I don't know.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can.
You should be able to magnify it on your screen. It should pop up.
Yeah.
There it is.
Better?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Now it's so big. I don't know. It's even brighter than the sun now.
I have to try to move the, all the people. Okay. So Jeff asked us to, um, you know, put together a planning team. And so at the elementary, I have ten, ten total on my team. I have eight certified teachers and two classified teachers, um, one representative from each grade level and a couple from fifth grade, I believe. So, um, we got together and, um, looked over different models and all of our numbers. And, um, together as a team, we came up with a couple of different models. And again, our guiding principles are the same as, uh, middle school and high school. My top priority is the, um, you know, health and safety of my students and of my staff, obviously. And, uh, what is best for students with, um, learning? So, um, the first model here is a K five and it's four days a week. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, there would be about seventeen to twenty students per class. And twenty would be pretty much our max because we want to make sure we have room for the teacher, obviously. And then, um, you know, any specialist that provides, um, any special services and things like that. So, um, you can see here on the screen that, um, we would, we're saying about four hundred and ninety students. You can see all of the, the class sizes there and it would equal out to about twenty-six classes when we're doing, dividing by nineteen totals students in the class. So that would require twenty certified teachers or twenty-six certified teachers. But we're trying to be creative and think outside of the box. And we got, um, permission to utilize, you know, some of our, I, our IAs and specialty, specials teachers and, um, maybe possibly reassigning some roles. So when you look at this one and Jeff, you can kind of scroll down a little bit. You can see that it would need, we would need possibly five more, um, full-time classified staff to be able to cover breaks and lunches and all of those things. So when you go down, now you can just kind of see Jeff, if you scroll down a little bit, um.
Marjorie, can I just add something real quick?
Sure.
Because on your, on your sheet that I sent you, it does say additional certified staff needed for four day a week. I just wanted to clarify, yours is going to say zero, but we would need probably between four to six. And the reason why we've looked at using, um, we've looked at using full-time IAs in the room and you'll see as we go down in this plan. And Marjorie and I in the, in the team have talked about this, but you'll see IAs in here. And the, the, we can still use IAs, but we're going to need, as you look up here, if we were to pull off this plan, we're going to need at least five more. So if you put all IAs in the room, we're going to need more on top of that because we still have to offer sped services. So we have flexibility with our IAs. But if we were to have that many kids come in, we're going to need, um, additional IAs just to cover just general things. So I, you know, like I said, these, these numbers can fluctuate according to, you know, you're looking at four ninety. What if it's only four fifty? What if it's four twenty? So, but for a four day week at the elementary school, regardless of you use IAs or not, we're going to need, um, a, a larger number of additional staff. So what the exact number is, I don't know, but you're going to need quite a few more just because you have more students, smaller class size, you know. So, all right, Marjorie, go ahead.
Thank you for explaining that. So yes, so you see that possibly there would be zero certified teachers needed, but there's, you know, that we're, there's questions about the use of IAs and how, uh, you know, that putting them in charge of a whole class of students. So it would be better if every student could be taught by a certified teacher. So that could be that I would need possibly four to six more teachers. So if you scroll down, um, this is the, the same, the same, um, model. It just kind of shows you, um, how many teachers in each grade and the location. So we're using the library, we're using the music room. Um, in this model, we're using the gym, which, um, I, I, I have to agree here with Darla and say, you know, are, are we looking at, at quantity over quality? Because, um, I don't think that what's best for students is sitting in a gym all day. Um, I don't think that's a conducive to a, a good learning environment. But, you know, at the same time, we're asking our kindergartners to sit in a thirty-five square foot box all day also and not play and interact. So none of this is like ideal. But anyway, so if I didn't use the gym, which I would prefer not to, because also we have nearly five hundred students who need to get up and move around and we have more rainy days than not. And so, you know, we have the covered area. We're going to have to zone out the playground so that each cohort uses a certain zone all week so that we can eliminate so much cleaning in between. So to be able to utilize the gym for a couple of recess zones would really be super helpful. So if that were the case, then yes, I would need another teacher and, um, I would need a couple more rooms, which I think I could probably find. All right. So go ahead. These thoughts and concerns that you see, these are all thoughts and concerns that came up from my staff on my planning team. Um, I have not shared out these models with the rest of my staff yet because I feel like I, I want to get, I want to know where we're going before, before I put it out there. So once I put it out there, we can discuss and we'll have so many things to plan for. But, um, I just feel like with my team, we just needed to, to work together on coming up with a couple of models. So I'm sure you've read through, um, the different concerns and thoughts. They're all very valid. I'm not going to go through them all right now. So Jeff, keep on scrolling, please. Okay, so this is the first hybrid model option, um, at the elementary. So, um, this is basically you're just taking the student population and splitting it in half. So each teacher is still responsible for the same number of students they would be in a regular school year. It's just that they're split into two separate groups. So, um, you can see the class sizes are, are smaller, twelve to fifteen students per class. We have the prep day and heavy cleaning day on Wednesday. This leads to unblended classrooms, which is preferable. And then again, teachers would receive their two minute breaks and a thirty minute lunch. And every certified teacher is used as a classroom teacher except for our special ed's, um, teachers, uh, even music and PE, so have been moved into a kinder and a first grade classroom. So trying to get creative here. Uh, you can scroll down a little bit. So that would require eighteen certified teachers. Now, if we had, um, if we have a group of students who, um, decide to only do online, then it might be feasible to have a teacher who is responsible for those students. I guess it just depends on the number of students who do that. So that, this is the one model here, um, and if you scroll down, Jeff.
It's just, it's so big on my screen, I, you know.
I know. It's okay.
It's making me feel younger, like I don't need reading glasses anymore.
Me too. Whatever it takes. This is just showing you again, um, how many teachers per grade level and how many in each class. So we would keep our, we would maintain our three teachers per grade level like we have now, which would be twelve students one day, thirteen on the, on the other group, which really is ideal for our kinder and first graders, okay? Because trying to think about nineteen kinders and first graders in that one classroom together is a little bit overwhelming when you're trying to maintain social distancing and health and safety guidelines. Okay, so go ahead and keep going down. Again, this is just breaking it down for you so you can see the totals and how many classes, how many students would be in each class. The second option is another hybrid K five. But the only difference is here is we've maximized our space in the classroom. So we've maximized it. So we make sure we're using, you know, getting as close to nineteen students in each classroom as possible. And that leads to, um, having one teacher teach, and you'll see this here. So you can see teacher three here in kindergarten would have fifteen kindergarten students on Monday and Tuesday. And then that same teacher would have fifteen first grade students on Thursday and Friday. So they would be doing a blend. And if you continue going down, that would happen again in, with the third grade. So one teacher would teach, um, seventeen third graders and another, the same teacher would teach, um, eighteen fourth graders. And then same thing in fifth grade, but, uh, one thing, you know, just considering what could, uh, the other half of that teacher, maybe possibly be a TOSA to help with online students. So these are, um, this one results in a, a loss of three classroom positions. But if you think about maybe there's reassigning to different, um, roles that would be needed. You know, some things to just consider with the models, um, with the four day a week. I, I would love to get our students in, um, every day if possible. We did look at a five day a week model and it is just really not feasible with all of meeting, trying to meet all of the prep time, lunches, all of those things. And also have to remember that our day will not look like a normal school day. We'll have to have probably staggered arrival times and dismissal times because you, you can't just have a flood of students coming at one time. And we have to have, um, you know, hand washing and sanitizing times. We have to have bathroom schedules. We can't allow cohorts to mix in the bathroom and we only have three bathrooms. So that in itself is a huge challenge, right? And then of course, like the passing times, we try to limit the passing time between cohorts and the flow of the school. So one-way directions, utilizing all possible entrances and exits. So, um, and then there's also lunch, right? So students would be eating class, eating lunch in their classroom. And I'm not sure what that looks like yet. I don't know if we could have it delivered or if the students are going to have to go and walk down with their cohort and pick their lunch up and walk it back to the classroom. So there's just a lot of, um, a lot of things to still work through. But those are the, the three models, um, that we've come up with that we think, you know, are going to be the best during this situation. None of it is ideal, uh, and lots of challenges with our youngest learners. I, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that getting our kindergarten and first graders to school every day or four days a week is the best for them. Because, um, you know, as you know, our youngest learners, they learn through play and they learn through socializing. And with these strict health and safety guidelines, they're not allowed to do that. So we're expecting them to, to just sit in their space and, and not play with others. And, um, when I think about their, their emotional and their mental health, that is not what's best for students. So I think we have a lot of things to continue to consider. And, um, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but like Darla said, I have an amazing team and I know that all of my staff are on board. They're willing, they're flexible. They're willing to do whatever it takes to provide the best education for our students, um, in this really, really challenging time.
Would there be any value in splitting the groupings differently than K five? Maybe doing a, a K one type of arrangement in a, um, in a two-five arrangement or something like that? Would there be value in that?
You mean as far as a K one comes to school, maybe on a hybrid? And yes, absolutely. That is something that, that we will definitely consider. I, I feel like if we go with a four week plan or a four day a week plan, that there's got to be some flexibility in there with our different, um, groups of students.
Yes, Marjorie, one of the things, I mean, my son just graduated from the elementary school and the middle school, and I know how congested the parking lot gets. One of the things that we put in that emergency road, um, on the side, if that could be utilized, utilized for bus drop off and have kids drop off there, uh, alleviate, um, you know, just spreading the kids out, let the kids that ride the bus come in the back of the school. Let the parents drop the kids off the front of the school. That might be something that we could get away with, uh, given the restrictions that we have right now.
Yeah, definitely. Everything's on the table.
Then you could actually split them up as far as, uh, entering too, right? You could have two entry points.
Oh, yeah. We have, just in the front of the school, we have an entrance down by the kindergarten hall. We have the entrance where our Vermont Hill pit kids would go in, the, the main doors, and then another one. So we have plenty of, um, entry points, I think, that we can utilize to, you know, make it smaller cohorts.
And I guess I would just, you know, I know you guys are going to be creative. Just changing the recess, I don't know if it's a core cohort at a time in a shorter time, just to get them outside to let some of the energy that they have. I don't know. Elementary school is really tough in my mind.
It's really tough.
Working from home? No, we're talking over each other. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. You were just cutting out a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Internet service, I guess another point to, uh, teaching from home. I guess what I was, you know, elementary school service provides so much, not only education, but childcare as well for all the parents if they're trying to work. And if we're, if daycare services aren't, aren't available, you know, what that, what does that look like? And I don't know. It's just a tough, tough situation, Marjorie, that you're finding in your second year. It's a double learning for you.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge. Um, you know, we're not going to please everyone. It, that's an impossible task. But we're going to do the very best we can. And I know for a fact that my teachers will make every day a wonderful day of learning for their students because that's what they do.
So Jeff, if you had a, a chance to look, uh, maybe it's just, maybe there's no point. But I mean, if you take all these plans and you, you reduce the total count, student count by at least ten percent, probably, maybe higher. So maybe that reduces some of the need for additional staff at a, at a four day a week. Have you looked at the district to see if there's anything to even look at from a cost savings standpoint to help the budget support additional staff?
I guess, Will, I don't completely understand your question. So you're looking at like if fifteen percent don't come to banks this year, for example?
Well, my, my first point was it seems like these numbers are probably going to be down by somewhere ten percent plus, which might take a little pressure off the staffing needs. The second part of the question is, we're probably still going to need additional staff. Is there anywhere to get that money in the district?
I would say, I would say we're stretched, um, about as thin as we can go if it's nine billion. But we can rely on that SIA because we could hire additional staff using SIA money and being creative with that. And that's the reason though, Will, to your first point, um, I thought the sun would be down by now. To your first point, the, if we know ten or fifty percent or fifteen percent are going to be working online, we can adjust numbers and we can move staff around. That's why it's important for me to get something out. And you know, it, it's hard to make a decision for people, for, for people that don't know or completely understand. Like if I said, at least elementary will be four days a week. I mean, keep it general. We're trying to get four days a week with the middle school and high school. But we're still working on that, but we need to know if you're going to send your kid or not. You need to roll in the online academy and then we can take the final step to finalizing a plan. And it may work out that we can only do a hybrid. And it may work out that we can only do a hybrid or it may work out, we could do four days a week. It's all gonna just spend, it's all gonna, it's all gonna be on the student count. So my goal right now as a superintendent is I wanna get K five in at least four days a week. Bottom line, because of, like Ron, you said, the childcare issue. And also, and to Marjorie's point as well, K one's gonna be a little more difficult, but maybe you start in a hybrid and you ramp it up and you're, you're four days a week by week four or five. I mean, there's all sorts of things we can do around that. But focusing on getting K five, four days a week, figuring out how many kids are coming and how many kids aren't coming. And then we try to get creative at the middle school and high school the best we can. If we can get three days, if we can get four days, if we can only get two, whatever, start looking at different spaces and so on and so on. But I gotta get to that next point where I can send out a parent letter and just explain, here's where we're at. I really need to know this. Cause I think people, and I've already been getting phone calls, hey, what's your online academy gonna look like? I described it to a parent today, they said, hey, that sounds great, that's what, that's what we're gonna do. So
So how do you see, how do you see that going forward? I mean, clearly you've, you've all done the first round of assessment and kind of put your arms around what the issues are. How do you see that? What's the next step?
Well, the next step is to finalize those numbers, but I wanna show you. I do have some models and as far as based on staff and what we're looking at that Joni has put together and her and I have worked on it. You're gonna need to give me a second though. Give you a better visual of, better visual of what, kind of what it costs out, so. Just give me a second, I gotta bring it up. And then I'll unmute Joni as well, cause she's done the, the work on this as well.
If I understand what you're saying, you feel like you have to, before you poll the community, you have to go to them and say, this is what we're planning, so now I need to know your numbers. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. If that is your thinking, would, would it be worth considering to go the other way to say, we are targeting, whatever it'd be, I'm gonna pick because it's my favorite, and we're targeting, we're attempting to create a model that'll allow us to have be onsite throughout the district for four days. But we can't finalize this until we get your input.
Right. I would agree, yes, Will, I would agree with that. But if I can, if I can guarantee four days a week for elementary, at least they have some idea where to start. And just, I'm not sure I can guarantee that at the middle school, high school. But we're gonna be as creative as possible, but I really need you to fill this out. If you're gonna be completely online. And then we can move forward with working on a plan at the elementary. And then we can see what we can get to with middle school, high school. And like I said, my philosophy is, I started with K five, I had Darla work out a model to get it to six. And you just work your way up, six, can you get any higher than that, you know, based on our staff? I will send this to the board after the meeting, cause I know it's the first time you're seeing it. But we, and Joni, I'm going to unmute you if I can find you. Sorry, this is. All right, back to Sharon. So this is something we put together, that Joni put together. And like I said, I'll send it to you after, but this is where I'm trying to wrap my brain around this. So if it's hybrid, two days per week, I've sent you some information on that. Right now, our budgeted certified FTE is forty nine point five. If everybody went hybrid, there's a big reduction in need for certified staff. Obviously, we don't wanna do that if we're just gonna do two days a week. If you did in person, so this is option two, this is the one where it gets budget feasible, budget neutral, and that's if nine billion, that's SIA. I mean, this is a lot of, lot of positive thinking here. So just looking at this, this is with four days per week in person, K five, two days per week in person for a hybrid, six twelve. And the reason is, when you go to a hybrid, you, because of the class, because of one teacher can do, you know, have nineteen kids, one hybrid and nineteen the next. So actually, they have a class size of thirty eight over a two day period. You can eliminate staff that way or teaching staff. So if you do a middle school and high school hybrid, we need to move certified people over to the elementary school to make four days a week work. So if you look over here, budgeted FTE forty nine point five, total FTE in this model is forty eight point five. Now, and I will say it again, cause I don't want us to forget this. This is including two additional teachers. And Joni, please correct me if I'm wrong, you should be unmuted. This includes two additional teachers through our SIA plan.
Yes, that's correct.
And if you get down, so that's option two, and that's where you can see the numbers match up. When you get down to option three and you start looking, and I had Darla run this, the, the sixth grade to include that, when you get down to four days per week in person and you add the sixth grade in, now we start getting where it's not feasible. Cause now we need one more FTE and now we need one more FTE and three and a half classified. So now you're starting to add two hundred thousand dollars in costs, for example. You'll, and then we run the numbers at in person, four days a week. If you work it all out, and like I said, this isn't set in stone because you can get creative and put a hundred kids in the gym. But is that what you want? I mean, those are the questions we have to ask ourselves, quality versus quantity. But if you said, we wanna go four days a week, K twelve, we need eight additional teachers and at least five, four and a half, five classified staff. So we're running these models through what is capable in our budget. And I've, I've emailed you information as far as, and this hasn't changed. This is if we get fully funded, but you're also looking at down forecasts and we don't know how quick or how long this COVID's gonna last, if they shut businesses down again. We're gonna see a pretty bleak forecast coming up in the next biennium. So I get what everybody's saying, I want kids in four days a week. Don't get me wrong, I want them all in four days a week. If we can be safe, if we can use the protocols, if we can meet the guidance. And if we, if I could hire ten teachers a day, it's a done deal. But we have to look at the costs and we also have to remember, you do have an ending fund balance. So I want to just mention option two. This is using up that nine billion in what's budgeted. We're gonna have additional costs for PPE, we're gonna have additional costs potentially for maybe another bus route. There's going to be additional costs coming over here where you potentially, and probably will have to do a supplemental budget where you're gonna have to spin down the ending fund balance. You know, could be one percent, could be two percent, could be three percent. If you remember in the budget meeting, we passed it at twelve and a half percent is our ending fund balance. We did that because of the, you know, like I said, the potential for financial forecasts in the future being down. But we've always hovered around ten, twelve percent on our ending fund balance. Anticipating flat funding for the following biennium. So I'm taking all of this into account as I talk to you tonight because I don't disagree with anything anybody is saying. We want kids in here as much as possible. But how, how do we do that? What's our priority? For me, it's K five at least. And we, we get really, really good at a hybrid, possibly at the middle school or high school. Or maybe we get creative, maybe we can get three days a week for a lot of our kids. And, 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 and keep being creative with our teams and see if we can stretch it a little bit.
So for what it's worth, and I'm not advocating this, but in terms of being creative, in the bad old days, we did drop the ending fund balance to five percent.
Okay.
I know that's extreme and I'm not advocating it necessarily, I'm just saying that if you really wanna turn over the stones to be considered, we got down to a three hundred thousand dollar ending fund balance. Now, the budget was smaller then, so that was a better percentage. I'm not advocating that for sure.
Right. So I just wanted to share that with you, cause we have been running the numbers. I mean, and, and, you know, and that's the part, as the teams go through. So now's the point where this is what you have, be creative, see what you can do. But also with that, like I said, getting a letter out to parents, looking at, here's, here's what's potential right now. Like if you had to tell me tonight, like this is, this is, based on our money, tell me what we can do. And I would say right now, it's option two. But we're not ruling anything out because maybe a hundred students go online. And maybe we can get six, seventh grade in, or maybe we can get high school in a little more during the week. So until we know that number, that's, that's where the, that's where the challenge is at. So we're gonna be adjusting over and over and over and over again until we open our doors.
Does it cause any problems to have one grade in the middle school that's on a four day week? Any other ones that's on a hybrid?
Uh, no, because there's gonna be bus runs and kids every day.
Okay.
Anyway, so. And I've had Darla look into that, it adds more staff, obviously.
Well, I guess, if I could just speak real quick, when I look at the K five or like the hybrid for option three with K six for four days, I would say, hey, you have a grade in the middle school that's can come four days, we're rotating that every three weeks. And get each grade in there, this is the teachers that we have and kind of spread it out. Just, you know, sorry, I didn't bring that up earlier, but I, I think, you know, something to consider. And I guess Jeff, on the finance side, I know I've seen in the news, the House has passed a budget with additional dollars directed to schools. This budget doesn't take into account any of that, if that gets passed through the federal government. Would, would this stuff be revisited if you got additional funds?
Yeah, I think whenever we get additional funds, you do have to revisit it.
Well, the, the funds we got from the original CARES Act is not, I, I don't believe can be used to pay for staff. So you can redirect money somewhere else. But remember, that was the biggest one. I don't think this one that's to the House is bigger for schools and all we got was sixty six thousand dollars. So I, I don't think we're going to see a pile of land at our door.
And, and just so you know on that, to get sixty six thousand, other schools, other school districts are size. They use the Title I allocation, so our free and reduced lunch numbers are much lower. So another school district I know of, our size, for example, got two hundred and ten thousand. And we got sixty six. So why they went off the Title I allocation, I, you know, I mean, I understand. But I also don't understand.
They're the same though.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to do the same thing everybody else is, so.
And we have to share it with the private school as well, so we won't need the whole sixty six.
Jeff, will you have any trouble getting teachers?
If I need, if I hire additional teachers?
Yeah, will you have any trouble getting them?
No, because a lot of districts are going to a hybrid and I saw an article today that, and it wasn't in Oregon, but if, if a lot of districts go to a hybrid, I know they're gonna stretch a lot of their staff, but they're looking at the same financial future that the rest of us are. So that, I believe there'll be teachers out there.
Good. I saw, I saw one report where a lot of teachers were considering retiring or not being teachers and that there was gonna be a teacher shortage is the reason I asked.
The challenge is gonna be substitute shortages. That's gonna be a big challenge next year. I could be subbing, Joni, Joni volunteered to sub today too. I'm gonna hold you to that, Joni.
Okay. Great.
I, I have, I guess I have a suggestion. I'm still not convinced that we can't do four days a week across the board, except for maybe kindergarten, I think they should go two days. Why not put something out there to the parents and say, look, we're, we're gonna have an online version, we're gonna push to have four days a week. Or this is what we're shooting for, we're trying to get there. We need to know if your kid's coming or not. Please let us know and, and make an online survey so you can get feedback in real time. Don't expect anybody to send something back in because we'll be waiting forever. And just get an idea of the numbers, because I think we, we can, we can bat around all these different models till we're blue in the face. But until we actually have the numbers, I would say it's, it's gonna be really challenging.
So it seems like Dan, that what you were saying is only a little bit different than what Jeff was, which was instead of saying it's most likely gonna be a K five, four day a week and then a hybrid, but say we're trying for four days across the board kind of thing and then ask that.
I mean, whether or not it's four days or two days, the people who aren't gonna come, aren't gonna come. So we need to just figure out what that number is. And honestly, the biosafety concerns, transmission, all that kind of stuff, two day hybrid versus four day, there's no difference. I'm sorry, I, I kinda work in this field. If you're bringing all the kids into the school, it doesn't matter.
Well, and it's, right, but it comes down to staffing. I mean, that's what it comes down to, so.
Yep.
What, what can you staff? But I think it should be fair to say to people, like, I, I can commit based on our budget, if everything goes according to plan, I can commit right now. Cause I'm gonna have to finalize something and get a blueprint out. I mean, it's sooner than later. I can commit right now, K five, four days a week. We can look at Kinders going two days a week, just, but that could free up, that could potentially free up staff of like sixth grade, for example. And then like Norrie said, I think it's important to share with people that a hybrid may be possible. Now, that's not our ultimate goal, but a hybrid or four day a week is what we're, is what we're shooting for. Based on, you know, and, and leave it at that.
I support what Dan is saying and I, I actually don't agree. I, I think that obviously we will only do in the end what we can do. But I think we should set a target, a goal of attempting to reach district wide four days. And I think we should tell the, the parents that we're polling, that's our goal because we feel it serves the students better. We won't know until the final numbers come in exactly whether we'll be able to do that above sixth grade. But that's our goal is to trying to, that we feel that best serves the community, that best serves the students and that's what we're shooting for. I mean, you know, we can say if we can't do it, we will provide a hybrid. But make clear to them that we are putting out the effort to serve their kids the best and, and we've set a goal for ourselves that now and whatever, beginning of school, To serve their kids the best, and, and we've set a goal for ourselves, that now and whatever, beginning of school. That will work itself out, but that's what we're shooting for.
So what I, what I was just saying, like, with Dan, is what I was hearing is Jeff wants to get something out, and you go, and you're both saying. Prior, or focus it that way, as opposed to, like, say, the goal is, so you're kind of giving him. The, sort of the wording you'd like to use, but you're, he's, I mean, he's, he's asked, he's wanting to go out and get that, so. You're just both saying, let's say our goal is four, four days.
Well, I think the wording is important, yes, but I also would put that challenge to the whole district.
Well, right, yeah, no, it just seems like he was trying to do that, and you're just saying, use these words, but you're, they're also trying to do that, so I think he's just. Trying to get it out, and. We were giving him our priority goal, so I was just, just trying to, like, bring it back to what, what, what we are asking him.
And, and I already have an application ready for our online academy. I have the link set up, I have everything ready to go, I can send it out tomorrow, so I was just waiting for tonight. I can put some communication together, that will include that. I may send it every day for seven days. I want everybody to fill it out, like, I want, because you're right, we may not get to four days a week, but we need to know that number.
Jeff? So. How many, what percent would have to opt out of in school and go to online to actually be able to do four days? For the whole school, K twelve?
I don't, Raymond, I can't answer that right now.
The reason I, because if it's not, if you have to have forty or fifty percent in order to be able to, to go to online to do that, if thirty percent won't do it, if twenty percent. Whatever that number is, you don't wanna. I guess I believe you don't wanna say something that you know you can't do. Unless you get fifty percent of the people going to online, I just. Without knowing that number, I wouldn't wanna put anything out. That you know you're not gonna do, because fifty percent aren't gonna go online.
And you do have to remember, even if they go online, we still have teachers assigned to them.
I, yep, I know that, I just meant, it does reduce or what you have in the building.
Right, it reduces what you have in the building, so you can fit more in, but.
Right.
I'm convinced from the report that we heard today, that the combination of whatever that number is, and I believe it's gonna be somewhere between ten and twenty percent. And some more creativity, both on utilization of resources, in terms of teachers in classrooms. And possibly management of the budget somewhat, I think we can get there.
So just kind of checking time, it's eight fifteen, and it's, that's what I was sounding like, Jeff. Sending out something is, and then, once he gets the number, revising plans and calling us back together, is that, is that the next steps?
How soon do you think you can get that out, Jeff?
Uh, I can get it out tomorrow.
Wonderful.
I'll work on it. And. Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it tomorrow morning and send it out tomorrow.
But I was just kind of wanting to look at all the board members and get a head nod, that's, that's good with us, right? We're saying, do that, and then, well, okay, and then he'll call us back together when he gets the number with, with the revision by staff. That's, I just wanted to make sure I was hearing it right.
I mean, regardless, I think we should have another meeting next week.
Jeff, if, for that new number, or?
Yeah, I would say, get the number, and then let's talk. See if it changes anything.
It seems like that they, there's a few more things identified already, that they, the billings reported that could be explored a little further to see if there's any. To see if there might be a little bit more blood and turn up.
So I guess, I, I mean, I. You know, once we get the number, we can explore that, I mean, I can report that back to you, I mean, I'm more than willing to meet, but. I mean, I know what your goal is, it's the same goal that I have. So if I get those numbers, and. My principals continue to work with your teams and try and figure out how to get more kids in some way, somehow. I mean, that's, that's gonna, that's a big ask already. I don't, I don't know if you let us do our, do our work, and then when we're ready to come back to you, because. You know, at some point, we have to say. You know, we, we got as far as we could, and we need to move forward. To get to the blueprint part, to get all of this stuff in. So I would, I would, I would say that we get the survey out, we start getting the numbers in, and we let our teams start messing with the numbers. Looking at the suggestions you gave this evening. And also to. Look at the kindergarten hybrid, what does that release as far as staff goes and things like that? So that, that's a lot for us to do in the next week or so, so I don't know if having another board meeting next week, right? You know, I don't, I don't know what more we, we would have at that point.
What about the new guidance that's coming out, isn't it next week, I think, twenty first?
It is the twenty first.
I don't know what day of the week it is, so.
It's a Tuesday.
So I guess I would be thinking, if, then he could put the new numbers in, work with staff, staff works on plans, and, and the new guidelines come in, and maybe think about a meeting. The week of the twenty seventh, because that would give them a week with the guidelines, and maybe a little over a week with numbers.
That sounds great.
Is that okay?
And I can, and I'll update you on, you know, if we, if we find some more space, or find more, you know, find more, whatever that may be. I'll be as optimistic as possible, but. We, it's still a huge challenge. But we won't give up yet. I do, I do, well, I do know we can get K five in four days a week. Which was a, I, I would say a win at this point for that. And we'll do everything we can to figure out six twelve, how we can get them in more. Based on the numbers. The SIA money, if that drops at all, that's gonna affect everything, so. And we don't get that number till August first.
Well, like, for example, if, if you find that we will get a reprieve on letting, on funding with seniors that are gone after January. If that chance you get a, maybe that'll throw a little money in the pot.
So it sounds like the letter goes out, the guidelines come out, staff keeps working, and Jeff reconvenes us the week of the twenty seventh, that acceptable to everybody?
Yeah, and let's, let's do it that Monday.
Okay, the twenty seventh.
Yeah, because. You know, if, if we're gonna meet one more time like this, I'm gonna have to make some adjustments, I'll have the blueprint, blueprint's pretty much done. I can submit those to Washington County Health before I submit them to the board, so I just need to. And the blueprints are fairly, I'm, I'm halfway through them already on just general guidance. And I'm also gonna start putting together, Dan, Dan emailed me something about Medford released some things, and they put together a really nice document. A back to school framework, and I'll start working on that, so as soon as we. Land somewhere, that, that can go out immediately.
That'd be great.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, it's a good document.
And I don't wanna miss an opportunity, because these are hard conversations, and, and they should be hard conversations, so I don't wanna miss an opportunity to thank you. And ask you to thank your staff, because I know how hard you're working on it, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, this was fabulous, thank you.
It's really good, really good.
No, I, I.
And I'm glad you didn't make Marjorie go first.
Yeah, she usually gets to, I mean. Alright, so. Okay, so my first step, I'll get the communication going. Guidelines will come out, I'll meet with my admin team, and they'll meet with their people, and then we'll see what we can do. I am, I am more positive now that we can get K five, four days a week, I mean, that's a huge lift. And people will watch us and be, I think, excited about that, so. Alright?
Anything else?
Sounds great.
Yeah, perfect, great, great work, everyone.
Thanks again. Alright.
Thanks, everybody, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.